Oh, I like that better. All right, sorry we're gonna, we're a couple minutes late. Welcome to the September 8 Finance Committee meeting. I'm gonna be your host all evening, so sit tight. We're gonna move through this quickly, hopefully. We are going to kick it off with one new resolution we have tonight, 7825 coming through water, water pollution with Mr. Wing.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. As many of you probably know, on August 27, a portion of the West Main Street sewer between Slocum and Welsh collapsed and created a sinkhole. And the Water Pollution Control Department tried to do a spot fix, but it continued to, continued to break and collapse. So they had to end up replacing the whole line from manhole to manhole. And this resolution authorizes that work to be done and waives competitive bidding because it is an emergency. Superintendent Curtis Witham has quite a bit more information about this. I'd like to ask him, say a few words.
Yeah, absolutely. Thank you, Councilman Wing. As Councilman Wing stated, a sinkhole was discovered on West Main Street. And during the investigation of handling it, the repair was decided to just repair the area of the sanitary sewer that had collapsed. But unfortunately, during the repair work, the 100-year-old pipe had fractures from almost upstream manhole to downstream manhole. And as the repair work was going on, each joint that was next in line collapsed in on itself during the process. After this happened twice, I was called out to the site to investigate, take a look at it, at which point I decided with the age and the fractures we were still gonna encounter, that would best just to replace this pipe itself. So that afternoon, the contractor Rock River worked up an estimate for me and got it back to me, and I requested that this work be done right away, considering the hole was still open, that the sanitary sewer itself was open, flowing still, and just to decrease any type of public hazard and hopefully decrease any possible additional costs that would come by keeping it open for a couple more weeks. I wanted that work done just as soon as possible.
They're going to replace the entire pipe all the way down West Main?
It is from Slocum Avenue in West Main to the alley east of Slocum Avenue. It's 170 linear feet is what they replaced.
Okay, 'cause that is a bad, has always been bad. So they'll repave and all that then?
They've paved over where the work was done.
Okay. Any other questions? No? Thank you.
Absolutely, thank you.
Mr. Wing?
Yes, so due to the nature of this piece, I will be requesting one reading and suspension during the regular meeting, and Councilman Ailes will be my second.
All right, thank you. Do we have any other resolutions that are not on my agenda we need to go over? No? Great. Ordinances, new ordinances starting with temporary ordinance 4625 coming through Economic Development. Mrs. Hoop?
Yes, thank you. This is just to accept the 163-plus acres out of Greenfield Township on Wilson Road. And Stephanie, do you have anything to add?
This is gonna expand the Rock Mill Industrial Park at another 163 acres. One of the parcels is in contract currently with a foreign manufacturer. And yeah, this is gonna, this is gonna update the zoning map. It'll be advanced manufacturing, just like the neighboring parcels.
Any questions from anyone? Is this the manufacturer use a lot of water?
This one currently, the manufacturing portion, the manufacturing functions do not utilize a lot of water.
Okay, thanks.
Sure. We do have some, actually, I'll say, most of manufacturing does not use that much water anymore, but we're very cognizant of it, of how much we have over there.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Hoop?
Councilman, Councilwoman Kreitz is gonna be my second.
Three readings?
And it's three readings, yeah.
All right. Temporary ordinance 47, also coming through Economic Development.
Yeah, it's a companion piece. So this one is the zoning portion of the annexation. It has to go to a planning commission first, but to get three readings, we're starting now. So the minutes from the planning commission will be added later.
Okay.
And Councilman Wing is gonna be my second.
Any questions on those two pieces? Anybody? Nobody? Okay. Temporary ordinance 4825, that's coming through Public Works. Ms. Teener?
Yes, we kind of inherited, we were given a cemetery that's up above where the Clarence Miller building used to be, the infirmary there on 37. And we're getting granted an easement so that we can continue mowing it, 'cause we've been mowing it for, well, probably since 2014 or 2015. And so this is just so that we can get the easement, so that we can continue mowing in that area.
Okay. Anything to add? Anyone?
Tim, is there anything else?
All right, we got time.
Good evening. Basically, what this does, well, we inherited a cemetery. It's a city-owned piece of property that's happened to be landlocked. Can't get to it unless we cross some private property. Back when we got it, the county owned the building, so we really didn't have any issues getting from the parking lot to the cemetery, 'cause we were going across county property. But they sold it to a private individual who's been very accommodating to us. But moving forward, should he sell the property to somebody else, we felt was the need for a permanent easement, so they could not restrict our access to that cemetery for as long as we have to maintain it. So part of that will allow us to do our work, but we'll also maintain the property we're crossing in the parking lot, portion of the parking lot we're using to stage our equipment. And when we're there, we'll maintain that in perpetuity.
Sounds good. Anyone have any questions? Seeing none, I have two readings.
Mrs. Kreitz?
Mrs. Kreitz, that's your second.
Thanks, Tim.
I don't see any other ordinances. We just sped through those quickly. So department updates. Do we have anyone here wanting to give a department update? Ms. Woody?
So I have two updates for you. The first one, I passed out to each member of council, the water rates. So this is kind of a companion to temporary ordinance 4125. According to our ordinances, City Council sets the rates for our wastewater. However, it leaves it up to the Service Safety Director's Office to set the water rates. So as part of the rate study that you all received and reviewed a couple weeks ago, I wanted to kind of put it in a snapshot for you, what the new proposed water rates will be based on that new rate study. So the first column is, it describes whether it's residential, outside the corporation limit, and then the different commercial rates. The existing rates are what we are currently billing in 2025. The next column that says 2022 study rates, this is what the, this is what the rates would be in 2026 based off of our prior rate study that was completed in 2022. So if we did not take into consideration the new recommendation for rates, that is what the rates would be for our residents, outside corporation and commercial. Based on the new rate study that was just completed, that you received a couple weeks ago, the new proposed rates are in that following column for 2026. So as you can see, based on the new rate study, residents will actually see a, they will not receive any increase at all from 2025. It will actually be a decrease than, as what was proposed in the original 2022 study. Same for outside the corporation, the commercial 1 to 100 cubic feet, the commercial 101 to 250 cubic feet. So you can just kind of see that snapshot rates as, based on the new rate study. And so I wanted to provide that to all of council so that you would be fully aware. The intention would be to implement this new rate structure as of January 1 of 2026, at the same time to coincide if council does approve the wastewater rates based on the current study. The flat rate. Oh, as Mayor nicely pointed out, we are, again, just like the wastewater ordinance that was before you, we are recommending that we go to that flat rate for all users. And that would eventually go into effect then, as you see, by 2029, everybody would have a flat rate for water use. And again, same idea as your wastewater rates, is that a gallon of water is a gallon of water. So I'm open to any questions that you have based on this rate study. But again, it was for your information so that you can see that and we can all be on the same page for that. Have you no questions for that? My next piece is much more fun. In 2024, the city applied for a grant called the Better Cities for Pets. And it was a $20,000 grant that the city was awarded, that we partnered with the Fairfield Area Humane Society on. And it is a way to help promote pet-friendly businesses in the city of Lancaster, to highlight and showcase some of our businesses that are pet-friendly, and also do some PR education and programming to help individuals throughout the community adopt pets. So what we are currently working on is, we have created an application that is currently live on our website. However, it's, the whole program hasn't been rolled out yet. But we are going to have little signs for businesses to apply online, whether they are pet-friendly or not. And if they are pet-friendly, they can say that pets are welcome. They can say pets are welcome on our patio. Or they can say, we love pets, but they aren't allowed inside. And that will be an indication to pet owners on what type of business it is throughout the city. And then in addition, again, we're gonna do some education around pets and eventually then do some programming to try and do like, take a pet out for the day, or foster for a day, I guess, for lack of better words, if you will. I'll defer to Mr. Schoonover, President Schoonover of the evening.
Yes, thank you. So this is kind of a long-timecoming project for, for us. So just, just a little bit of background. So the Better Cities for Pets program, you can, you can be awarded that status based on certain things in your community. The, and then they have a grant program to go along with it. So we were, we were one of five nationwide that got a grant last year for that. So looking at where we lacked in terms of pet friendliness in town, whether it's housing or whatever, business was, businesses was the biggest thing. So trying to get, you know, we have a ton of tourism that, that we see. People, when they're traveling with their pets, more often than not these days, hey, where can I go with the pet? So this is kind of step one. And then Ms. Woody was referring to what I like to call our Doggy Day Out program. So, you know, I'm in the business of adopting animals. So if you're not able to adopt an animal, but you wanna come take one out for the day, let them get out of the shelter, this program kind of partners with that. So folks know where they can go with their pet. They can know, you know, who's, who's pet-friendly. Or even, you know, again, maybe, maybe it's a restaurant, you can't bring your dog in, but they are still pet-friendly and they have something for you. So you'll see it on, I think, on the website under Community. It has a link for that. So then you'll start seeing businesses participate. And then we'll start kind of doing that outside of, and hopefully a county-wide program. So it's kind of cool to, to see that come to fruition. So I like the signs too.
And in case you're wondering, City Hall is pet-friendly. Pets are welcome in City Hall. In fact, several of the offices, mine, I know the Auditor's Office, utilities, we keep dog treats, dog biscuits in our office, so that when Councilman Teener comes in, we...
And I am so sorry, he pooped in your hallway. Well, you took up his grassy area 'cause of the scaffolding, and that's where he always goes. And he got in, I couldn't get him out in time. And I cleaned it up, it was okay. But it was right between Service Safety Director's Office and Mayor's office.
But it wasn't personal.
He was mad 'cause his grassy area was gone.
But we do keep treats in the building, so that when pets do come in, we can give them a treat. And that's all I have, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you for bringing it up. Any other department updates? Stephanie?
There's just not enough on the agenda, so I figured I'd just make some things up to come talk to you. But I sent you all an email Friday talking about TIFs for the Sheridan Road project. And Steve and I had a good back and forth. And just wanted to make sure you all know I'm available to ask questions. I can answer questions tonight. Or you can give me a ring and we'll get together and we can chat. So just wanted to make sure you all know I'm, I'm available for questions, so.
Any questions? Why is she standing there? No? Thank you.
Okay, you're welcome.
Anyone else? Going once, going twice. That's not Bob Barker. I'm sticking with Bob Barker tonight. Please pay a note to your pets. So what's his tagline? It's not going once. All right, we're done. What department updates? Council meeting prep, that's me. I don't have any. We'll get into it as we go. There's a couple pieces on there. Not pieces. Where's my agenda? With, in new business? Can I do it now, or do we have to wait? Liquor license stuff? I was just informed, like Roosters, as an example. We don't even know what that notification exactly was for. Is that correct, Mitch? Well, we already had a liquor license option for that.
Sorry, I'm sorry, I'm new here. I didn't know to turn that on.
I know, you're like, great, he called on me. He said he wouldn't. You're welcome.
So we, we received one for Roosters that looks a little bit different than what Anitra showed me this evening. We did, for what it's worth, we talked to the chief police about, about Roosters. I mean, we all, we're all familiar. I don't think we had any issues in particular with that one. And then I think there's a transfer as well that you have in front of you tonight. I forget exactly which.
And that's the one that I wanted to address, that transfer. We didn't, so we don't have any new information, our new, our information on the new owner?
That's correct. We don't have information on the new owner. Nothing to report.
Okay, so that one, we're just gonna leave? We're not, you know, we usually just vote to, we're just gonna not address the Brewski's drive-through one?
Yeah, it's not due until night.
Yeah, since it's not due until after the next meeting, we're just not gonna address that one. So I want you guys to think, well, why did we skip over that? So that's why we're skipping over it. 'Cause we have no good information. Other than that, I don't have anything, any other items for finance that we wanna discuss? Everybody's super quiet tonight, I like it. All right. We are going to, well, I need a motion to adjourn.
So moving?
Motion in a second. We are adjourned at 6:20. Regular meeting, we cannot start before 6:30, so we'll start promptly at 6:30. Thank you.
The Frankie Smith Funeral Home and Crematory in Lancaster and the Johnson Smith Funeral Home in Baltimore have a long and wonderful history of serving our community. Feel free to give us a call at 740-653-0652. Stop in and see us at either of our two locations, 405 North Columbus Street in Lancaster and 207 South Main Street in Baltimore. Respect for tradition, regard for change.
Hi, this is Chuck Sims with the Lancaster DARE program. DARE provides students with skills to resist the pressures of drugs, gangs, and violence, and emphasizes self-esteem, good decision-making, and communication skills. This month, we're honored once again to be chosen by Buckeye Family's Buckeye Cares program for sponsoring our events, to donating DARE vehicles, or supporting us financially. We say thank you, Buckeye, for all of your support.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to pass temporary resolution seventy twenty-five. Discussion.
Yes, we actually had a very thorough discussion about this in committee, so I would like to make a few comments. As all of you know, this piece authorizes up to $150,000 for the water department to contract with Arcadis for an asset management plan. As you also know, we have excellent, excellent operators in the water department, but they're not engineers. So this brings in an engineering perspective into the plan. A different firm would not know our system nearly as well. It'd take them much longer and it'd be much more inefficient. And another positive aspect I wanted to stress was having an effective management plan would take our water department and put it more into a proactive state and rather than a reactive state that we're kind of in right now. So I think this is a great idea and I urge passage.
Thank you. Any questions, comments? No, seeing none, I'll ask the clerk to call her. Call the rule, please.
Mr. Ailes?
Yes.
Ms. Bittler?
Yes.
Mr. Bizjak?
Yes.
Mrs. Kreitz?
Yes.
Mrs. Who?
Yes.
Mr. Luchtenberg?
Yes.
Mr. Schoonover?
Yes.
Mr. Sully?
Yes.
Ms. Teener?
No.
Mr. Dwing?
Yes.
Motion passes nine to one. Temporary resolution seventy-one twenty-five.
A resolution to authorize the service safety director to advertise for requests for qualifications and issue a request for proposals for a design professional for design, a construction administration of the Edie Road Fire Station project, and to declare an emergency. This is through Safety Committee, Mr. Bizjak and Mr. Sully.
Mr. Bizjak.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that council pass and engross upon the written record temporary resolution seventy-one dash twenty-five.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to pass temporary resolution seventy-one twenty-five. Discussion.
Thank you, Mr. President. This legislation is very simple. Once again, it allows the administration to go out for requests for qualifications to see who's qualified to design a new firehouse here out on Edie Road, as well as allowing the administration to issue an RFP for that design. And there's no appropriation attached to it. So that's all. Thank you, Mr. President.
Anything else? Any questions? Seeing none, we'll call the rule.
Mr. Ailes?
Yes.
Mrs. Bittler?
Yes.
Mr. Bizjak?
Yes.
Mrs. Kreitz?
Yes.
Mrs. Who?
Yes.
Mr. Luchtenberg?
Yes.
Mr. Schoonover?
Yes.
Mr. Sully?
Yes.
Ms. Teener?
Yes.
Mr. Wing?
Yes.
Temporary resolution seventy-one twenty-five passes ten to zero. It's all for third reading. We're moving on to second readings of resolutions, beginning with temporary resolution seventy-three twenty-five.
A resolution to amend permanent resolution ninety-five dash twenty-two, authorizing the service safety director to enter into a contract for construction of the North Water Treatment Plant Replacing Project. This is through Water Water Pollution Control Committee, Mr. Wing and Mr. Ailes.
Mr. Wing.
Yes, this is the second of three readings.
Second of three readings on temporary resolution seventy-three twenty-five. Temporary resolution seventy-four twenty-five.
A resolution to authorize the mayor to prepare and submit an application to participate in the Ohio Environmental Protection Agency Water Pollution Control Loan Fund Program for the planning, design, and/or construction of the Frederick Street Sewer Separation Project to execute contracts and agreed loans as required, and to designate a dedicated repayment source for the loan. This is through Water Water Pollution Control Committee, Mr. Wing and Ms. Teener.
Mr. Wing.
This is the second of three readings.
Second of three readings on temporary resolution seventy-four twenty-five. Temporary resolution seventy-five twenty-five.
A resolution to increase receipts appropriated from the unencumbered balance and to amend the certificate of other sources and appropriations with the county auditor and the Special Improvement District Fund two zero two zero. This is through Finance Committee, Mr. Schoonover or Ms. Bittler?
Mr. Schoonover. That'd be second of three readings, please. Second of three readings on temporary resolution seventy-five twenty-five. Now we're moving on to seventy-six twenty-five.
A resolution to authorize the service safety director to enter into an agreement for engineering services for the Lawrence Street Pump Station Replacement Project. This is through Water Water Pollution Control Committee, Mr. Wing and Mr. Ailes.
Mr. Wing.
Yes, this is the second of three readings.
Second of three readings on temporary resolution seventy-six twenty-five. Seventy-seven twenty-five.
A resolution to authorize the mayor to prepare and submit an application to participate in the Ohio Public Works Commission State Capital Improvement Program and to execute contracts as required. This is through Water Water Pollution Control Committee, Mr. Wing and Ms. Teener.
Mr. Wing.
Yes, this is the second of three readings.
Second of three readings on temporary resolution seventy-seven twenty-five. Moving on to first readings of resolutions, we have temporary resolution seventy-eight twenty-five.
A resolution to authorize the service safety director to enter into a contract for construction of the West Main Street Sewer Replacement Project and to declare an emergency. This through Water Water Pollution Control Committee, Mr. Wing and Mr. Ailes.
Mr. Wing.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to make a motion that council suspend its rules and waive the second and third reading of temporary resolution. I think, is that seventy-eight twenty-five?
Seventy-eight.
Seventy-eight twenty-five.
Second.
Thank you. We have a first and second on suspending and waiving the second, third readings of temporary resolution seventy-eight twenty-five. Mr. Wing, discussion?
Yes, we just discussed this in finance. This is for the emergency sewer repair.
Great. Any other questions? Seeing none, please call the rule.
Mr. Ailes?
Yes.
Mrs. Bittler?
Yes.
Mr. Bizjak?
Yes.
Mrs. Kreitz?
Yes.
Mrs. Who?
Yes.
Mr. Luchtenberg?
Yes.
Mr. Schoonover?
Yes.
Mr. Sully?
Yes.
Ms. Teener?
Yes.
Mr. Wing?
Yes.
Motion to suspend passes ten to zero. Mr. Wing.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to make a motion that council pass and engross and enter upon the written record temporary resolution seventy-eight twenty-five.
Second.
Wasn't that neat?
We have a motion in a couple of seconds to pass temporary resolution seventy-eight twenty-five. Any other discussion? Seeing none, please call the rule.
Mr. Ailes?
Yes.
Mrs. Bittler?
Yes.
Mr. Bizjak?
Yes.
Mrs. Kreitz?
Yes.
Mrs. Who?
Yes.
Mr. Luchtenberg?
Yes.
Mr. Schoonover?
Yes.
Mr. Sully?
Yes.
Ms. Teener?
Yes.
Mr. Wing?
Yes.
Motion to pass carries ten to zero. Do we have any other ordinances to come before council this evening? Answer is no. Moving on to ordinances, beginning with third readings, first temporary ordinance thirty-seven twenty-five.
An ordinance to establish new permanent right-of-way along a new center line in connection with the Arbor Valley Drive Rehabilitation Project to vacate the existing Arbor Valley Drive right-of-way once the new Arbor Valley Drive right-of-way is dedicated, and to acquire a new easement for the water main in the connection with the new Lancaster High School. This is through Public Works Committee, Ms. Teener, Mr. Ailes.
Ms. Teener.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion that council spend, sorry, I would like to make a motion that council pass and engross and enter upon the written record temporary ordinance thirty-seven twenty-five.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to pass temporary ordinance thirty-seven twenty-five. Discussion.
Yeah, this is just helping to realign the easement so that the project and that can move forward and they can get everything finished.
Any other discussion? Seeing none, please call the rule.
Mr. Ailes?
Yes.
Mrs. Bittler?
Yes.
Mr. Bizjak?
Yes.
Mrs. Kreitz?
Yes.
Mrs. Who?
Yes.
Mr. Luchtenberg?
Yes.
Mr. Schoonover?
Yes.
Mr. Sully?
Yes.
Ms. Teener?
Yes.
And Mr. Wing?
Yes.
Temporary ordinance thirty-seven twenty-five passes ten to zero. Temporary ordinance thirty-eight twenty-five.
An ordinance amending Part Five General Offenses Code of the Lancaster Codified Ordinances in adopting Chapter Five, Six, Eight camping prohibited. This is through Law Committee, Mr. Bizjak and Ms. Bittler.
Mr. Bizjak.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that council pass and engross and enter upon the written record temporary ordinance thirty-eight dash twenty-five.
Second.
We have a first motion and a second to pass temporary ordinance thirty-eight twenty-five. Discussion.
Thank you, Mr. President. The city's been getting multiple complaints about folks either improperly or illegally camping on public and private property. This ordinance is working to address that concern that residents have given the city and also give law enforcement, code enforcement, a little bit more teeth in addressing that. That's all. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Any questions, comments? Yes, ma'am.
I did want to give a little bit of background because I was contacted by a number of citizens regarding this legislation, and I wanted to address a couple of their concerns publicly. One is about the relationship of this legislation with current administration and events happening at the federal level in Washington, DC. I can assure you they are unrelated. We started looking at this matter in quarter one. It actually came up for the February meeting, which was continued to March, and that's the first time that we discussed it, which was before those events in DC. Also, just to address the concern about the limited facilities that we have, we do have multiple facilities run by private and public entities within the city and the county, offering health and addiction services, beds and shelter, and includes different phases of the process with additional facilities that are under construction and also in planning. Additionally, I wanted to add that I have, I have concerns with the proposed legislation as it's currently written. It involves the blanket inclusion of private property. And while initially comfortable coming out of committee, after further researching the issue and digging into it, I believe there are opportunities to refine the language further so that it isn't a blanket inclusion of private property. As an example, if I wanted my grandkids to come over and sleep in the backyard in a tent for a couple of days, if my neighbor had a problem with it, I could be cited and fined under this legislation, and I think that's concerning. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions, Ms. Bittler?
Thank you, Mr. Schoonover. I did act as second on this. I have some of the same concerns that Mrs. Kreitz has voiced, and I will be able to know on this as well.
Thank you. Anyone else? Questions? Want to address any of those concerns?
Well, I had similar concerns, but the purpose stated, does that not clarify that it's not for your backyard? Do you have an answer for that?
Sure. I got the thing this time. So that's correct. So the purpose of the statute is not to, is essentially not to penalize what you just brought up, Councilwoman Kreitz. I wrote this piece of legislation, I wrote this ordinance, and I had that in the back of my mind the entire time. That's just not how our enforcement wing at LPD or code enforcement really works. I think the mayor will attest to the fact that if I say "we" as a city, if we go out there, you know, to a situation where, you know, whatever camping you can imagine, there's going to be multiple opportunities for somebody to, you know, essentially disperse and leave. This isn't, you know, this isn't a situation where, you know, we're trying to legislate out, you know, kids camping in tents, you know. There's no one out there who doesn't think that somebody should be able to get their Boy Scout or their Girl Scout badge, you know, by camping in the backyard. But we do have some significant issues across town with, you know, people camping in trailers and campers and RVs and tents and things like that, and by and large, we're unable to address that issue. And so, while I appreciate that there isn't a specific carve-out for what you're bringing up, carving that out would actually defeat the purpose of the statute because if I carve out a private property, camping exception will end. Then you'd be able to camp on the private property anyways. It would just defeat the whole purpose. So, you know, I think further questions. Hope that addresses your concern.
So it'd be kind of up to the discretion of the officer or the code enforcement?
Absolutely.
If somebody is camping for Girl Scouts, Boy Scouts, they could say, hey, they're just going to be here for a day or two, and then it's okay?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Anybody else before I circle back around, Ms. Kreitz?
I understand that, and I appreciate the fact that that's not the intent. However, that doesn't mean that we don't have a young, zealous police officer and a very angry neighbor in a situation that culminates into that perfect storm where that situation does come to fruition and a homeowner is, you know, cited or something like that. It's not preventing it, is my point. I also know that there are other, at least one other municipality, which appears to have legislation that would help take care of the issues that we have as far as private property right-of-ways, sidewalks, entrances, but doesn't have that overarching private property blanket. And that's really my concern. Thank you.
All right, anybody else? Seeing none, I'll ask, we are for voting, we have a motion and a second, so please call the rule.
Mr. Ailes?
Yes.
Mrs. Bittler?
No.
Mr. Bizjak?
Yes.
Mrs. Kreitz?
No.
Mrs. Who?
Yes.
Mr. Luchtenberg?
Yes.
Mr. Schoonover?
Yes.
Mr. Sully?
Yes.
Ms. Teener?
No.
Mr. Wing?
Yes.
Motion carries temporary ordinance passes seven to three. On to second readings of ordinances, beginning with temporary ordinance forty-one twenty-five.
An ordinance to amend Title III. Is that right? Yeah. Title III, Chapter nine one five and nine one six, by repealing and replacing existing sections nine one five point zero four A, nine one five point zero five A, and nine one six point zero eight C of the codified ordinances of the City of Lancaster, Ohio, and to declare an emergency. This is through Water Water Pollution Committee, Mr. Wing and Mr. Ailes.
Mr. Wing.
Yes. Second of three, sorry. Second of three readings.
Second of three readings on temporary ordinance forty-one twenty-five. Temporary ordinance forty-four twenty-five.
An ordinance to amend Lancaster Codified Ordinances, ordinance Part Seven Business Regulation Code, Chapter seven zero nine, to cultivation, processing, or dispensing of medical marijuana or adult use of cannabis by repealing and replacing Section seven zero nine point zero five, review and reapproval of adult-use cannabis moratorium. This is through Law Committee, Mrs. Kreitz and Mrs. Bittler.
Mrs. Kreitz.
Yes, second of three readings.
Second of three readings on temporary ordinance forty-four twenty-five. Temporary ordinance forty-five twenty-five.
An ordinance to repeal and replace existing permanent ordinance twenty-one dash twenty-four, section of a setting public improvement inspection, these pursuant to Lancaster Codified eleven zero seven point zero two A, and to declare an emergency. This through Law Committee, Mrs. Kreitz and Mr. Bizjak.
Mrs. Kreitz.
Yes, thank you. Second of three readings.
Second of three readings on temporary ordinance forty-five twenty-five. Moving on to first readings, beginning with temporary ordinance forty-six twenty-five.
An ordinance to accept the annexation of one hundred and sixty-three point four three four plus or minus acres in Greenville Township and to declare an emergency. This through Economic Development Committee, Mrs. Who and Mrs. Kreitz.
Mrs. Who?
This is first of three readings.
First of three readings on temporary ordinance forty-six twenty-five. Temporary ordinance forty-seven twenty-five.
An ordinance to amend the zoning map, subject to passage of an annexation of one hundred and sixty-three point four three four plus or minus acres in the Greenville Township and to declare an emergency. Through Economic Development Committee, Mrs. Who and Mr. Wing.
Mrs. Who?
This is first of three readings.
First of three readings on temporary ordinance forty-seven twenty-five. Temporary ordinance forty-eight twenty-five.
An ordinance to authorize the mayor to accept an easement for access to the closed county infirmary cemetery or parcel number zero five three three one eight one 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 zero and to declare an emergency. This is through Public Works Committee, Ms. Teener and Mrs. Kreitz.
Ms. Teener.
First of two readings.
First of two readings on temporary ordinance forty-eight twenty-five. The other ordinances to become, come before council, one that I know of. Moving on to tabled legislation, do we have any movement on thirty-one twenty-five? No? Okay.
We're going to have a hearing. There'll be a hearing on that, so.
Thirty-nine twenty-five, do we have any?
No. No, Mr. President, that's going to be discussed at the special meeting.
Okay. Moving on to unfinished business, do we have any unfinished business we want to discuss?
Yes.
No? All right, new business? Announce a public hearing, please? Or am I announcing that?
I put it up on your special council meeting.
Okay, cool. It's a new business, too. You're good. We'll talk about that later. We discussed, if you're looking at your agenda, we already discussed the liquor license stuff, so we can take some action on the Roosters one, if I can get a motion.
I move to approve the Roosters Lancaster's Inc. liquor license.
Second.
Motion and a second, we just need a roll call vote. Everyone in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Mr. President, point of parliamentary. If it's a roll call, don't you have to call everybody?
Oh, I said roll call. Is it a roll call or a voice? Call the rule, then? Yeah. Whatever. We're all fine with it, yes? Is it legal? Mr. Harden? We got it good. Under new business, go ahead.
The public hearing, what time and where?
She moved it down into the meeting, so she's going to read that.
Oh, got it.
Later. So it's up there.
No, I apologize. There is a public hearing next meeting. That'll be six thirty. There it is, right here. Thank you. Okay. I apologize. I was incorrect. Public hearing, September twenty-second, twenty twenty-five, zoning map amendment due to the annexation of the one sixty-three point four four three four plus or minus acres from the Greenville Township in the City of Lancaster.
Okay.
That's the public hearing.
That's next week.
I apologize, not the special meeting.
Anything else for new business? I do, I know that you're going to read the special meeting, but I had a couple different people reach out beforehand, so we have this special meeting that was called, scheduled for next Monday. There are a couple of you that I've heard that cannot attend, so how do we want to handle that? Do we want to revisit a new date? Do you want a couple of dates thrown out? Like, what dates are not? I'm assuming everybody wants to be there, so if we need to change it and we can discuss it now as a group, that'd be great.
I think it should have probably been out to all of us if there was any conflicts because I would like to be there for that because there are some issues that I would like to discuss and be there, but that is a work night for me.
And then you have a conflict as well?
I probably have the most difficult schedule. I'll be out of town next week, Monday through Thursday evening, so I probably have the most difficult schedule, so if I can't be there, that's fine.
So if the clerk can, let's just throw an email out there for some other suggestions on dates.
Mr. President?
Yeah?
The special meeting will serve no purpose if we don't have it prior to the twenty-second, and I'm available Monday night only, and I requested the meeting. If, you know, if everybody can't be there, I don't know if we're going to find a date where everybody can be there.
Yeah.
We can try. We can try.
But Thursday night, are you back for Thursday evening?
I'm actually getting back late that night, so I won't be back Thursday night, so that's okay.
But I think we just heard the mayor say he's only available on Monday.
Yeah.
Correct? Is that what you said?
That's correct. I could cancel a couple engagements, but that's tough to do.
Okay. I'll get with President Porter. We can, we'll figure something out as far as even if.
Can I ask by chance, how long was it that you knew we needed to have this meeting? I mean, is it just a spur of the moment thing?
No, when we called it is when we knew we needed to have it. This is a request of discussion with Councilman Ailes and others about fireworks that happened, and if we were going to put fireworks legislation in place before the end of the year and have three readings, we need to move on it now. But it also allows for a discussion prior to proposing legislation. So that's the purpose of the special meeting, to have an open discussion publicly so we can hear pros and cons on fireworks legislation, and then if appropriate, bring a first reading at the next regular meeting. You may or may not know, but there was a significant fireworks display on the east side that was much beyond residential recreational fireworks and well beyond what was permitted, and the residents were put at risk, for lack of a better term. I mean, we're talking about a fireworks display of a commercial-grade fireworks literally going over tops of homes that are twenty-five, thirty feet away from that display, and.
For thirty minutes.
Oh, yes, for thirty minutes.
Do we have, and I saw the invite, and I apologize, is there, do we have an agenda? Is that, was there something else that?
We also would like to discuss the South Central Power legislation that's been sitting on the table on and off for a year and allow for a discussion of, they have a request to modify the legislation in front of you that's on the table to have a limit of twenty-five megawatts that would allow anything under that threshold to be served by South Central Power. We have a counterproposal of five megawatts, but we want you to understand what those are, how big they are. So we were going to have an opportunity at that evening to discuss the size of each one of those developments, what it might mean to this legislation, and whether it's appropriate for us to amend the legislation that's on the table.
Okay.
Can I just add something?
Sure.
When the state legalized fireworks in two thousand and twenty-two, I, I'm not sure that they really thought it through, and that happens. And what they do is they dump it on the city, and what we have is a situation where you're asking a police officer to evaluate whether all of the required regulations are being followed to be allowed to set off fireworks, and they're not qualified to do that. Most of them can measure one hundred and fifty feet, but where that you get into a technical difference is the difference between a one-point-four G, which is allowed, and a one-point-three G, which is considered professional grade and not allowed. Well, I'm not an expert either, but I'm going to tell you that on Labor Day weekend, what I saw was professional grade. I thought it was, it sounded like someone got a great deal on the fireworks that they didn't set off at the festival, like half-price or something, and just decided to set them off on Labor Day. That's what it looked like, sounded like, and I'm probably a half-mile away.
Ms. Teener.
So this is probably in twenty eighteen or twenty nineteen. This had been handled back then before they even were legal. They were being shot off at Glasgow Park. They were professional grade. Remember that? You were on council. I called you. You were on parks.
Sure.
And you even told me on the phone, oh, they should have, because the cops showed up, watched it, full-blown blown fireworks, just like they were doing at the fairgrounds that night. They went on for two hours. Cops showed up, he sat there for two minutes and watched them and then drove away. And because I told that to you then, see, so this should have been handled a long time ago. ago.
I don't think it's the same.
It's not.
Situation.
This is Huffer Drive, the houses are...
It's fine, it's like, seven years ago before it was legal is a whole different, that's a whole different.
But I'm just saying, these things should've been taken care of a long time ago. No, it isn't.
Okay. Go ahead. This is why we were wanting to have a special meeting about it, I guess.
Exactly.
So, Ms. Buddy?
Public property, they were prohibited under the new law also. State law prohibits Glasgow Park or any public property, uh, so that should've been cut and dried, and you're right, I do know the enforcement did not take place that.
No, it didn't, they, they drove away and everybody started clapping, and that's why I'm saying that, I mean, they should take care of it when they see it, period.
We, we feel the sa, I feel the same way about what just happened on Labor Day, it could've been enforced, and it wasn't. Go ahead.
Is there any permitting process or any kind of?
Hold on a second, wait, 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 hold on.
That's okay, I'm willing to wait. I will just say, I wanted to add on to what Councilman Ailes was, uh, pointing out, is not only are we asking our law enforcement to make these decisions, by the time they are called out, it's in the middle of a display, so we're asking to make these decisions in the middle of a firework display, which they can't measure out, and they can't see what the grade of those fireworks are. So, the whole purpose of this exercise is for us as a city to decide, what do we want to allow, how do we want to allow it, and maybe put forth some sort of permitting so that we can have the ability to understand what the citizens are wanting to do ahead of time, so that we have the time to look at what are the grade of the fireworks, where are they going to be located, and make certain, all those safety practices are set prior to someone letting off fireworks.
Yes. Okay. Mr. Sully?
A similar question is with permitting, was, the state legislation, did it have any guidelines for permitting or any recommendations or?
No.
Of, kind of to find a happy medium between?
They have not, however, we have been looking at, maybe like the City of Columbus, they've put in restrictions, so we've kind of been looking at that on what their ordinance states. Um, it looks like they have maybe some practices that we could adopt, um, or something at least to look at to start the conversation.
Okay. Anything else right now? We're just gonna, I'm just gonna have you read it as that's when the special meeting's scheduled, and if something changes between now and then, if you want to, if it doesn't change, then email your concerns or topics or give it to President Porter or myself, and we can bring those up at the meeting, and then we'll go for there. Again, that's just to prep for the idea of, are we bringing something?
There would be no legislation voted on at that special meeting.
Right, exactly, we're just, what are our options meeting?
Have we determined where this will take place? Will it take place here or at nineteen eighty-seven? Pardon?
The eighteen ninety-seven room.
Okay.
And I'll have a full agenda.
Okay. So, we're good on that for now, we'll move to the announcements of scheduled meetings, including the special meeting.
Um, I have next regular sessions of councils, September twenty-second, twenty-twenty-five at six-thirty in, in council chambers. October sixth, twenty-twenty-five at six-thirty PM, um, in council chambers.
Special scheduled meetings?
I have upcoming special meeting, um, September fifteenth, twenty-twenty-five at six PM in City Hall, eighteen ninety-seven conference room. And then, upcoming meeting, committee meetings for the next thirty days, Water, Water Pollution Control Service Committee, September fifteenth at seven-thirty AM, City Hall, eighteen ninety-seven conference room, Public Works Committee, September nineteenth at seven-thirty AM, City Hall, eighteen ninety-seven conference room, and then Finance Committee, September twenty-second, six PM, council chambers.
All right, thank you very much. Yeah. Sorry, I'm gonna slide backwards here, if we want to do the little round-robin on any updates from everyone and their committees, I'll start with Mr. Sully.
The only update we have is with our short-term runoff, where there's gonna be a public hearing, uh, to cover the changes that were, are being made.
Okay, is my understanding that we're reworking some of that and ask to go back to Planning Commission?
That's accurate, so we're, we're working on that on the administration side, and we'll have something for, uh, for that committee meeting.
Okay.
To consider.
For October, October's meeting, right? Okay.
Okay. Mr. Bisjack with safety?
Uh, nothing from the Safety Committee at this time, thank you, Mr. President.
Mr. Lichtenberg?
Nothing at this time.
Mr. Ailes?
Service Committee met on Friday, and I'm happy to report that Bowers Park will be included in the two thousand twenty-six budget, and will also be, whatever they can't get done with the seating and backstop, that will be included in whatever financing package they put together for Miller Park. So, we're moving forward, thank you.
All right, Mrs. Kreitz?
Uh, just a reiteration of what Mr. Bisjack mentioned, that the South Central Power legislation will be covered under the special meeting.
Yeah, thank you. Ms. Teener?
Um, our mo, um, uh, Public Works will be September the nineteenth, I believe it was gonna be, I think, the twelfth, and then they're going to, I think Kurt's going to say what roads are gonna be paved for next year.
Great. I hate to skip you, but do you want to give an update, or are you feeling good?
Well, since we talked about Miller Park, I can do a shameless plug.
Sure. It's full of shameless plugs tonight.
Lancaster Rotary, um, is in the process of raising funds for the new playground at the new Miller Park. Um, today it was announced, we've reached the six-hundred-and-fifty-thousand-dollar mark, which is exciting, the last three-hundred-and-fifty's the hardest. Um, with that in mind, we are having a fundraiser, uh, the twentieth, four to seven downtown, uh, and, uh, the Battle of the Bands, five local bands will be performing, and tickets are available.
Very nice, as a Kiwanis member, I feel like we did our...
You, then you definitely need to buy a ticket.
Our way cheaper.
I do believe Rotary donated to the Kiwanis cause, though.
Okay, so.
Rotary did donate to the Kiwanis cause.
That is true. I, I was a totally slam, I'm just saying.
Question, what, what, what day is that gonna be?
Saturday.
The Saturday?
It's, yes, the twentieth, a week from Saturday.
A week from Saturday?
Yes.
Mr. Wayne?
Uh, yes. Water, Water Pollution Committee, next meeting is, uh, next Monday morning at seven-thirty. Uh, most of the legislation we discussed at our last meeting is currently on the agenda and being read by our wonderful council clerk, and, uh, the, the only other thing I wanted to give a heads-up about is, um, due to some, uh, in the last administration, federal Len Kop rules, uh, we will have to, um, amend some ordinances in Chapter Nine-Eleven to comply with the new federal rules, so that is currently being drafted and will be coming, uh, to us shortly.
Okay, thank you. Mrs. Hoop?
Yeah. I need to turn that on. Um, Economic Development, next meeting is October thirtieth at seven-thirty, um, and then Stephanie's gone, but I think you can still contact her if you want to go to the State or the County on September thirtieth, just reach out to her. I'm going, so.
Okay. Thank you, anybody on that end of the table before we move on? No? All right, thank you. Uh, reading of bills, please.
Um, I have one for a hundred and forty-two dollars and forty-eight cents for publication of ordinances.
Make a motion, pay the bills.
Second.
Motion is second to pay the bills, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. No need for an executive session that I'm aware of, so I will take a motion that we adjourn.
Mr. President Protam, I, I make a motion to, for the meeting to be adjourned.
Second.
Second.
Motion and a second to adjourn, all in favor?
Aye.